All right, Dr. B., you there?
I'm ready.
Okey-dokey. All right, okey-dokey. Everybody. Good day to all of the visitors and those who are supposed to be here for the regular meeting of the Edgecombe County Board of Education, August 15, 2022. In order to honor social distancing related to the coronavirus pandemic, and we hope it's moving, the public may attend this meeting per capacity of 25. In-person attendance will be on a first-come, first-served basis. However, the public may still view the board meeting at the Edgecombe County Public School Link. Please join me if you will, as I call you to order, and join me as we stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Item 2.1, recognition, Ms. Hope.
Good evening, Board Chair, County Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. This evening, we would like to...
I don't think they can hear you. They can't hear you.
This evening, we would like to recognize our Child Nutrition Director Ruth McDowell, who was recently named the President of the School Nutrition Association of North Carolina at their conference held in Greensboro earlier this summer. Congratulations, Ms. McDowell, and thank you for all you do to serve our school community, ensuring our students have healthy and delicious meals.
Standing ovation. Absolutely. Congratulations. When we attended the Summer Leadership Conference, there was a session on food service and feeding and community foods and all of that. We simply had to identify ourselves as being from Edgecombe County, and all of the presenters knew that Ruth McDowell was the leader of the pack. So congratulations. You make us look good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also excited to recognize the Employee of the Month. Yamicah Bullock is the Assistant Principal at GW Bullock Elementary School. Ms. Bullock completely took charge in leading the school for the month of July. She not only led and managed summer school, but also continued to push forward with the hiring process in the weeks prior to a new principal being named. After working tirelessly all summer, she volunteered to come in on her days off to conduct interviews and complete the hiring process for the candidates she recruited. She deeply wants to support teachers and students and is committed to doing whatever it takes to do so. According to Principal Melissa Altimos, she has been extremely welcoming and eager to collaborate. Congratulations to the ECPS Employee of the Month for August, Yamicah Bullock. Yes. And I also wanted to add that Greg Sesam sponsors this award, and we'll have a gift certificate delivered to you tomorrow at school. He was unable to be here tonight.
Thank you. Bless you. Absolutely. I would sure hope that I had... When I was at West, you were a math science person. Absolutely. Wonderful. Coming along. All right, item number three for public comment. I hold the sheet, and there are no signees, so we'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Dr. B.
So there are a couple of additions and deletions. 8.5B, we're going to table that item until we get some additional signatures. This is the item for our redesign of our high school, so this will possibly be back on in September, but we'll table that for now. And we'll add 8.7B and 8.8B. Both are facilities' use fees for Grandville Police Department. One is for the morning and one is for the afternoon. We'll also add 8.9B, approval of lifting the mask mandate on school buses and transportation, but we'll talk about that as we move into the agenda. And 8.10B, request approval of the MOU between Opportunities Industrialization Center and OIC and ECPS.
Okay. Are there others? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, all for motion that we approve our agenda as amended for August 15, 2022.
Second.
It has been motion and second for the approval of the amended agenda for August 15, 2022. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds, like sign. As have it, and that motion carried. Item number five, approval of the open session minutes, July 11, 2022, regular business board meeting. You've had an opportunity to read that, those minutes, the intercorrections, additions or deletions. Hearing none, those, let your motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve our July 11, 2022 regular business board meeting, open session minutes.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second by Board Member Johnson. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion, unreadiness or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. As have it, and that motion carried. Item number 6.1, items for information. Dr. B.
So, school updates. You should have a little packet that's at your table, and I'll just walk us through this. So you see, the first item says, "New Teacher Orientation." We had 35 teachers participating in the New Teacher Orientation at Princeville today. The orientation will go through Wednesday. Some of the topics that were covered today were student engagement, strategic planning, tech time, and the teacher evaluation standards, and some mindful activities. So we were really excited because three of our scholar teachers were there in attendance. We certainly recognized them, but we're really excited, not just about New Teacher Orientation, but in particular, having our scholars there and participating. Great group, wonderful. They seem engaged, and it just seems like they had a wonderful day. The Active Shooter Drill will happen on Wednesday, the 17th, from 9:00 to noon at Tarver High School. We've done this drill before. We did it several years ago at Southwest. It is very real. We'll have Tarver PD, Sheriff's Office, probation, parole, Biden, and East Care will be there. Again, the drill is very lifelike. You all, board members, are welcome to come, but once you come at 9:00, you have to stay until noon. So we would love to have you. They'll walk us through lots of safety protocols. We just want to be cautious and be prepared. This will be our Active Shooter Drill as we begin this year, but as we go through this year, we will do some other safety protocols with our Sheriff Department, with the Maintenance Department, and with our school principals, just to make sure we're making sure all of our spaces are safe. If there's any loophole, we'll know what we want to know about those as the school year gets started. But again, if any board member plans to attend, if you let me know, so I can at least look out for you and make sure. Each person who's there, you're kind of designated to certain areas, so that we can just make sure we have folks there. I do believe the county manager's office has been invited. Don't know who will attend, and other folks that are in our community have been invited. I don't have a list of who will be there, but just wanted you all to be aware. Convocation is scheduled for Tuesday, the 23rd. We're planning to be at the Rocky Mountain Event Center. That's the same location where we had Summer Leadership. We'll start at 9:30. I think we can finish in about two hours. Lunch will be served, and then we have PD sessions throughout that building in different locations. We have quite a bit of professional development. It'll go from 1:00 to 4:00 that day, but again, just wanted you to know the location. I think we're going to work on some transportation piece. If folks want to ride the bus over, if they prefer to drive themselves, they can, but we will continue to work on that piece. Open House is on Thursday, the 25th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. All of the schools will have an open house at the same time. Staff ID badges. So we're issuing ID badges this year. We have some lanyards, and this will be required for staff to use on campus. It'll help identify, again, helping with some safety components. It'll also get them into the athletic events. We'll have Susan connect with board members, so you can get your picture, get a lanyard, and so you can do the same as you visit schools or go to athletic events. And then one final thing on the sheet. You see principal pay. Sure you've heard quite a bit in the news around principal pay. State budget changed how principal pay is calculated. I've shared this with our principals during DLT. Of course, they were aware of it, but this year, they are planning to emphasize school performance, and they're going to use the 21-22 school year, which was last school year. The change, this would change how principals have been paid. So over the past several years, principals have been paid a base salary based on average daily attendance, and then you get a bump up if you've met growth two out of three years, and you get another bump if you've exceeded growth two out of three years. And so the change could, would have a negative impact on several principals if you use just last year. Now, we know last year, there was a lot of students and teachers who were out with COVID. They had to quarantine. Different things happened that would have impacted their test scores. And so we just feel like this is probably not a good example of a year to use, but that's what has been passed so far. They estimated that the change could range from a decrease in pay between $7,000 and $18,000 for a principal, depending on if you were a principal who had exceeded growth, and then for the 21-22 school year, if you had not exceeded growth, that that could be a substantial change for you. It would take effect beginning in January. And so right now, what are we doing? And you'll see the bottom of the sheet, that the principals of the year have met with the state superintendent. They voiced their concerns. Superintendent Truitt has plans to meet with some elected officials to discuss the impact for principals throughout our state. And the superintendents have met with several leaders. We've discussed with Catherine Joyce. She's the NCA SA rep, and she's drafting some talking points that we will share with elected officials to reconsider that principal pay scale. So for ECPS, we're reviewing the impact. What is the financial implications for our principals? We're awaiting if indeed this lawmaker's changed their mind, but right now, it's scheduled to impact us in January. And if that impact stays, if there is not a change of heart, if they do not choose to hold principals harmless, I will be back before the board, possibly November or December, to make a request based on the impact of our leaders. Once we see what is the impact, what did principals earn the previous year, what would they earn this year, and look at the difference between the two, I will come back before this board. I don't feel like last year is a fair indication of our students or what our hard work our principals have done, and I certainly wouldn't want them financially to take a hit. And so I will come back before the board after getting our data, making sure we're clear what they were paid, what they would be paid for January. If lawmakers do not change their mind, I'll come back before you to ask for a change in their pay and supporting them. Any questions?
Questions?
How many, how many are we talking about? How many principals are affected by this?
So I think we need to look closely, but because we had some folks who, the last time we looked at data, they're no longer principals, and then we have some people who don't have, they would only look at one year of data because they didn't have three years. They might have been a principal for three years. So I want us to look and be careful before we say, but I think possibly three, maybe less. But again, let's look at it, because last year was atypical, right? And so you could have a situation in which, you know, I met, but then based on 21-22 data, I did not meet. So I just want us to be careful and not hold everybody harmless, just like I shared with you all. When we looked at the evaluation for principals, I certainly didn't look at data for this year. I don't think that was fair to do that.
I think that's a smart move. It's wearing, $7,000 can make a difference to somebody, $18,000.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's cruel.
Yeah, it is cruel.
Yeah, and you don't do, I mean, we've worked hard. We've been tired since March of 2020, some of us before then, but we kept holding on. We kept doing what was needed, and I don't think that's how you reward somebody by saying, "Well, we're just going to use this year, and we're going to decide what your pay is, and if it harms you, we're sorry about that." That's not good enough.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep.
Dr. Bruce, this is not, this is not on this subject, but I just want the board's attention, and I don't know how many people know, but the Hill Rap program that we have for reading in our system was brought to us by Susan Williams, who was killed Friday, coming home from Washington. But she contacted me when Hill Rap was doing their outreach, trying to put their program in other schools. Young mother, Tarver High graduate, two children in college, car accident, but she's like early 50s. And I just thought, since she had made such a huge impact, she was instrumental with Ayni to go to the Barn Hills to get funding for us. So it's a huge loss for our community and her family, but it's also a loss for us because she really did, she really did bring us something amazing to our system to be a little Edgecombe County and be able to offer some reading interventions in the 12th grade, and I just wanted the board to be aware of that, and it was a school update.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing. I did not know that. Yeah. One or two other things. Dr. Dove, I think, is here. So our new pre-K elementary, she'll just stand and wave. She's come to us from Wake County Public Schools, and just wanted her to be, you all to be aware, have a name and a face, okay? And then, as we move through the evening, when we get to close session, I have a little box for you all. The principals receive one, everybody at DLT receives one. It's a self-care box. Somebody told me I needed two, so I brought you all one, just so you can enjoy it and take care of yourself.
All right. Wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Bruce, I'm really concerned about this money thing here. Do you, I'm sure you wouldn't speak out names now, but if you find out the legislators that would be making the decision related to this, if you could share that.
I will be glad to give you names.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll be glad, I'll be glad to give you names, and we appreciate any support you can give us.
That's right.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Be on top of that.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. B. Want to thank you and your staff for looking at that, and I'm sure you'll keep us informed in whatever it is that we need to do. Please allow us to let us know. And welcome, Dr. Dove, to our system. Absolutely. Let me take a point of privilege. I remember Susan and the family. She was one of my, brother and all those were my students. Let's take a point of privilege and bow in a moment of solitude and recognition, because that was Susan's family. Amen.
Thank you.
All right. Item 6.2, maintenance updates. Mr. Williams.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bridges, fellow board members. All right, so quite a few updates, so we'll try to run through them as quick as we can. West Middle, we're about 99% done with the window replacement. So all the windows are done. I know if you ride by, you'll see some of the windows on the front have a board in them. That's because the glass was cracked while they were doing the install. Those will be changed out in the next few days, so that we'll be able to go all the way around the building. The last section is the 600 Building, which is the old pre-K building that sits out by itself. It's just those three classrooms that face the parking lot side, but you can see at the end, this one on this side was actually finished today. I just had took the picture before we were able to get them in. That's more about them. We also were able to get the two mobile units transferred to West. When we closed down the two-story section, they didn't have any flexible classrooms because everything was taken up. So we were able to get one from Princeville and one from Bullock. So that's three classrooms that they have now on campus. We have not gotten the communication wires set up, but we have had them assembled, and there's power on inside of them. Air conditioning upgrades. We were able to remove eight of the 10 units on that building. So those are the old ones that were in the building, were connected to the building. The one on the right is the two new train, two of the train units that we've installed. So there's a total of eight new ones on West alone. We're also able to upgrade the controls on this building as well, which are similar to the ones we have at Tarver High, North Edgecombe, and Princeville Elementary. Carver, they had four classrooms. They had carpet. We removed the carpet, and we put in new carpet inside those four spaces in the C-Wing. Martin Academy, here's the old windows that were in the building. As you can see, a lot of them are busted out and not functioning. Some of, a lot of them didn't close, so we were able to get those. The ones on the bottom are new. Like you said, they're darker. They have tin on them, and they're, I actually have boarded up the ones. On this is the side that faces the stadium. That's the front of the building, and the side is in between the auditorium and the gym. So here's what they look like now. This is the side that still faces the auditorium. So as you can see, it's a darker window, so it will help with the glare when they're playing volleyball and basketball in the gym, keep some of the sunlight out. Stocks, here's the new air conditioner for the kitchen area. It's going to sit right next to the word that a chiller is. Phillips, they have a bunch of VCT that was curled up and broken. We had all that removed going down the hallway leading to the C-Wing, and here's the new VCT that's been installed. Bullock, we had, I think about four units that did not function, so we replaced those with the diking units that we have been putting in across the classrooms, so they have individual control of them. So there's four sitting out there now. Southwest, the ductwork in the gym had a lot of paint that was chipping, falling off, and was causing stoppages during games. So we had the floor covered and protected, and we were able to get all of the ductwork, as you can see, around the lights, repainted. Also, we had the floors repolished. I just had Southwest, but we did every gym floor, every wooden gym floor and every wooden stage floor throughout the district. We all had those done, so this is similar to what most of them look like now. Southwest Edgecombe, the parking lot lights, we had a lot of issues with keeping those going last year. So as you can see, we took all the big halo lights down, and we installed the new LED flat panel lights. They sent me an email, said we missed four, but you couldn't see them because of the trees, so we'll get those swapped out as soon as those come in. Also, the service road in the back, it was a big mud puddle. I don't know why people kept driving through it regardless, making it worse, so we ended up getting those replaced in the back. So there's two sections that was replaced on that one. North Edgecombe, they purchased a scoreboard, so we decided to split the costs, and they bought the scoreboard, and we installed it. So they have a new scoreboard and a booster board, which is their orange section to the left. Also, we secured an athletic grant from the county, well, from the state, I believe, and we were able, those funds had to be strictly used for athletics. So we decided to go ahead and fix the weight room and concession stand roof. We replaced it. It was leaking. So there's a new metal roof on the gym, I mean, on the concession stand. Princeville Elementary, we partnered with Ms. Mercer in Princeville. She had funding available to spend on playgrounds, so we split the cost for an adaptive playground on her, on the elementary campus. So this is the new playground that the kids have to play on. All right, just a few updates. The chiller didn't come back on. Well, the kids, I'll take that back. When we turned the chiller on, we had some leaking pipes at North. We shut it down for about two weeks. The pipes have been replaced and repaired. We turned the chiller back on today. Also, Patillo, they have two new chillers, but it didn't come back on for some reason with the controls. So that's something that Envirocon has to work out. There's nothing wrong with the chiller, but we got it back on today. And so, also Pearl Street, we had started replacing the carpet. I'm pretty sure that a lot of people have heard. Our maps were not correct, and there's no way that we would have known, but our asbestos maps were not accurate. So when we started pulling up the carpet, or the contractor pulled up the carpet, we found that tile that was positive. So if you look at our maps, it's not on our map, but when he pulled it up, it was there. So we had to put it on hold. So that's why you see, if you go down those two hallways, that there's no flooring there. We had an environmental come in. They sealed the area off. They gave us a clean bill of air quality testing. So people, some people were upset, but it was nothing we did. So people, some people were upset, but it was nothing we did intentionally. And once the guy started pulling it, and he recognized, he stopped, because it was supposed to come all the way down this hall. So he did maybe 12 feet in one section and 12 in another. But we did get a clean, clear air quality test done. We have that paperwork from the contractor saying everything was clean and good to go. All right, and we'll do that maybe.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Oh, see?
When?
Oh, we'll probably look at getting this done when we're either Thanksgiving or Christmas break. Because you gotta have three to four days. You gotta have one or two days to pull it out, then you gotta have a couple of days for air quality testing. Plus, you also have to have time to put it back. So it'll be done somewhere around the fall, either Christmas break or Thanksgiving break. We should be able to get the pre-K assessment room over the weekend. That's not a big job. We can seal that off and get all that taken out, and then put the flooring back in there. Stocks, chiller will be removed on the 19th. That's the chiller that sits over behind the cafeteria, so you have a unit sitting there now, and that only serves the cafeteria. But we're going to put a new, bigger chiller that'll serve those, that whole, half of the older side of the building. That'll be delivered and removed, the old will be removed on the 19th, and the new one will be connected and the pumps up and running on the 25th, which still gives us enough time to have it running before school starts back. The school safety, we have IPOs, purchase orders issued for Carver, Southwest, and Stocks to have their cameras upgraded. We're waiting on parts. The DVRs are the biggest thing. We can get the cameras, but the DVRs are the hardest things to get right now. So we should, we're hoping to have those in and in place by October, but with shipping, I can't promise you anything on those. But we do have purchase orders issued, and NC Sound has that work. West Edgecombe Modular, those, like I said before, we have the power on, but we gotta get the intercom and fire alarm connected on those two before we allow students to use it. Teachers can use it, but we can't have kids in there until we have a fire alarm and an active intercom in that building. Southwest Edgecombe, we're going to have to spend the money, even though that chiller's going to be replaced in November. In order to use that two-story section of the building, we've got to change out that compressor. It's a big bill, but we have to spend that money to keep the area of the building cooled temporarily. So when we do it out, we can still sell it out for scrap, but it's just worth it to go ahead and do it versus sitting, having kids sitting in a hot building. The restrooms will be completed this, the week of the 25th. We tore out all the old partitions, the old block, and we've recoded the floors and bought new partitions. So that'll be completed by August 25th, which still gives us time before students get in. Phillips Middle, their restrooms will be completed this week. They think they have one set of bathrooms left to do with the partitions and new sinks. And Tarver High, we set the rooftop units down at the cafeteria end last week, last Friday. So that end of the building should be back in the, back up and running before the end of this week. There's a sheet that I gave you. It has a bunch of valves. So Tarver High is our biggest building, where as far as energy consumption. And so when we partnered with PDC, we had to figure out, like, why is this building so expensive? Well, here's why. If you read where it says "bad," that's all the bad control valves we have in that building. So it's either all or nothing. So what happened was, I don't know, at some point in time, instead of replacing the valves, they left, they just pried the valves open and let them just run. So that's why when you go in the gym in the wintertime, it's like 100 degrees. Because there's no control on, like, when it reaches set point to shut it off. So as you can see, we have over 40 valves that we've got to replace in order to get control of this building. The first change order, it was $67,000 to change out the first portion of these valves. So it's a quite pricey, you know, adventure, but it's something we have to get done. Some of them, not all of them are bad, but you know, if you look at the majority of them, it says "bad." And at this point, we've got half of them ordered. We'll get the next half ordered as soon as we can get our purchase orders and stuff pushed through. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
I listened very carefully to your report of things that were done at Southwest Edgecombe High School. And I'm wondering if the office area where has been a lot of complaint of the heat being, I mean, the cooling being something like 80 or 90 degrees, has that been taken care of or being taken care of?
It is taken care of. That's part of that compressor that we're putting in. So when I talked to Dr. Lampron today, she told me she was freezing, so obviously, I think, I think she's okay now. So I don't know how long that'll last, but compressor will be changed out Wednesday. So yes, ma'am, Johnson Control does have it running for us.
My question, what surprises are around the bend that we haven't gotten to on your list? That couldn't possibly be, I know a lot of things can't be done because of supply issues. Are there any big surprises down the line?
I don't foresee any big ones that we already have under contract and in the works. I do think we do have a couple of air conditioners that I don't think will make it to next year. But that's something we're going to have to try to tackle in between now and next cooling season. I do know Stocks has one more chiller we need to get out. South Edgecombe has a chiller we need to get out of there. And I want to say, West has three individual units, two serve the cafeteria, one serves the bandroom. I do know that we, those are on our list next to get up and out and replace. But big, big surprises, I don't foresee any. Shipping dates are, it's so fluid now. The chiller for Stocks is supposed to come in the last week of July, and it hadn't come yet.
We just, I just like to be prepared, because I know things are going to happen. I mean, looking at our buildings, you know that there's always something down the road that we can't replace everything in every building, and that's exactly what we need.
Yes. One of the next things we've got to get done is piping. Just like North, we put the new chiller in, new air handlers, and now we've got to go through and get that piping out because the piping can't handle the pressure that's coming through. So that's the next big thing.
Mr. Williams, we're getting ready to do the open house on the 25th. Any schools that, because I went around last year, and it was, there's some air problems. Any of them right offhand that we'll need to?
South may be uncomfortable. South Middle may be uncomfortable because that chiller is only running on one circuit, it has two. But we have ordered a compressor for that chiller. Nowhere else that I know of. I know they said Patillo's Media Center was warm, but we had it shut down for about two weeks, so I can't say it's not working because we got to give it a chance to catch up. And plus, we had two weeks of 95 degrees. So, but right offhand, Southwest was my biggest concern, I'll be honest with you, with that compressor in that two-story building. But we've, it seems to be running now, and like I said, I talked to Dr. Lampron today. She said she was freezing, but she wasn't going to complain because she's.
At one of the joint meetings, one of the commissioners, both of the fact that North bathrooms were out of whack, what's happening with that?
Those bathrooms are next. We're going to do those in the fall. Not the fall, well, late fall, right before Christmas. The partitions were not ordered with these right here. These were actually ordered in March, and we just got them right before school. So those will be, those are on order now. We have to price them back, but the work will not take place until right before Christmas.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments?
I have one. So I noticed Stocks, something was supposed to come for Stocks on the 25th. It was on our earlier slide. So open house is from 4:00 to 7:00. I don't know how that'll work out.
That chiller is actually running. We didn't come, we disconnected it. But then when the other one didn't ship, we hadn't taken the other one offsite, so we actually just moved it over and hooked it back up. So we should have, but Mr. Harron let me know a while ago that the 100, was it 400 size? 400 size wasn't cool today, so we'll get that checked out today.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate all that you all are doing, taking proof that we said thanks.
As we transition, we do have a meeting tomorrow with FEMA. Mr. Williams, the finance team, Stephanie Griffin, and I are meeting with them to hopefully settle.
All right, wonderful. All right. 6-3, T-Mobile Project. Mr. Hayes, the million-dollar man.
Greetings, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. The Technology Department has partnered with T-Mobile and has received approval to participate in the T-Mobile Project 10 Million Program. The purpose of this program is to provide hotspots to families that do not have Wi-Fi access at home. Families in this program will receive a hotspot with 100 gigabytes of data per year at zero cost to the district or the families. Students will be able to utilize their hotspots to complete homework assignments, review classwork, and access digital resources and library books online. Students will be able to utilize their hotspots for up to seven years, including after graduating from an ECPS high school.
That's great.
I have a question, Mr.?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
How many families are participating in the hotspot program?
So to begin, yes, to begin with, we're going to start out with 1,400 families, and then we can increase that up to every family in the district if we need to, pretty much. We're just starting out at 14. We don't want to overorder the hotspots and then have excess. So we'll start out there. After the first 10 days of school, if we just see that we need another 500 or 1,000, it's a quick turnaround to get them and to get them back in the hands of the students.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
6.4, to the Code of Conduct, Dr. Battle.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bridges, and other board members and guests. Today, I am before you to share an item of information, our evolving and our leaps towards our ECPS Code of Character Conduct and Support. As you notice, I underline "character" because we're shifting our language to focus from the conduct piece to building the character and skills that kids need to be successful in the learning environment. So we are ready to focus, shift our focus to "character" and "support." The easiest way for me to lay this out for you, it's a lot of information. It's been a lot of work over the last three years prior to my arrival here in ECPS. But I'm going to tell you the who, what, when, why, and how we got here and how we're going to do it. For the last two years, a variety of stakeholders, including parents, community members, teachers, administrators, and central office staff have worked independently and with engaging schools to rethink how we do this thing called "school discipline" and support our students with challenging, and again, that word, unskilled behaviors. So what is it and what have we done? We've revised our Code of Conduct to become a Code of Character Conduct and Support. It focuses on ensuring that students have explicit expectations. We focus on empowering our stakeholders and using a restorative approach to addressing discipline issues. As you'll notice in our new Code of, or Code of Character, excuse me, it includes our core beliefs, not just our core beliefs, but in there are stakeholder rights. So it talks about the rights of the child, the rights of the parents, and the rights of the schools and employees. It also says what our district non-negotiable rules are, as well as a behavior matrix that focuses not only on a punishment or as titled in our current Code of Conduct penalty, we now switch our language to a consequence paired with an intervention to get them the skills that they need to maintain their presence in the learning environment. When we were working with engaging schools, I don't know if we shared this bit of information with you. We did a year with engaging schools last year, and I guess they saw those ESSR dollars and sent us a quote for this year of over $100,000. Well, they had done the bulk of the work for us. They wanted to help us kind of roll this thing out, Ms. Swanson. And I went to Dr. B and was like, hey, we're smart enough, I think, to go ahead and put a plan together ourselves and save our district a lot of money. So we've used our, what we call our task force, again, that's composed of all those stakeholders, to finish putting this thing together and start the rollout process. This code, you'll see a couple of districts have, and towards our west, have adopted something similar. Most recently, Winston-Salem Schools, Forsyth Schools has adopted exactly the same thing that engaging schools was working through with us through. Their total document ends up being about 85 pages. When we started thinking about our stakeholders and who our community was, 85 pages of stuff isn't going to get to what we need. So we really are working now to kind of whittle that down to about 20 to 30 pages and have an electronic and a paper version. But that's for us. That's the meat stuff for us and to help guide our work, right? But what we're working on now is to find a one-pager, get all of this down to a one-pager, why it's important for families and what they need to know, how we're going to serve them and their students. Also, we have a Quick Reference and Implementation Guide for staff to include strategy support. So if your matrix says that we're going to support a student with a restorative conference, what does a restorative conference look like? So an implementation guide for our staff. So that was the what, the when. Well, we are going to pilot this implementation this school year. We've, well, I'll get into that in a minute. We'll just leave it there. The why. Why Priority 3 of our ECPS Strategic Plan focuses on Code of Conduct. We said that we were going to revisit and revise this to make it more in line with restorative, accountable, and trauma-informed practices, and that's exactly what we hope we have done. I'm going to let this number sit there for a second. I want you to just take a guess in your mind what this number might be based on what I'm talking about. Just going to take a pregnant pause here. That is the number of out-of-school suspension days that our kids had over the last school year, documented on school, out-of-school suspension days. That does not include the time that students were removed and placed in ISS or other areas around the building. These are the days outside of our school building. And when we look deeply at what some of those infractions were, I couldn't have written this better if I made it up myself. The top five for ECPS, disruptive behavior accounted for 17%, aggressive behavior, insubordination, cutting class, disrespect to faculty and staff. Now, with the exception of cutting class, all of those are subjective behaviors. They're open to interpretation, right? They could be whatever the teacher feels that day, whatever the principal feels that day, however we feel when we come in the classroom, how that child feels. Those are all kind of what we call ambiguous. And so what this code seeks to do is get to the meat of what disruptive behaviors are and actually name them and try and working with the skill that helps to correct the disruptive behavior versus labeling it disruptive behavior, slapping a code on it, and sending that child out of the building. So why is this code good different and not bad different? Well, our current practices and penalties allows for suspensions for tardies and truancy. Students K5 can be suspended for violations beginning at our Level 1 violation. Default for fighting for our students, grade 6 through 12, for our principals typically is a 10-day out-of-school suspension. In our current code, we have no requirement for reentry, process procedures, meeting after suspension. And it also allows principals to consider mitigating circumstances to make decisions. So that's definitely a positive thing. But what this pilot, our pilot practices, consequences, and interventions would do is just like I explained in the last slide, we would have more Level 1 and 2 infractions. This code has a total of five levels. Ones and twos are things like those disruptive behaviors, those unskilled things that we can help coach students through in the classroom, which help require students to remain in the learning environment longer. And so in rolling this out to some of our teachers, a lot of them said, well, okay, you're going to keep them in the classroom, but how will I get supported? So that's another big component of our code. Suspensions as a last resort for students under the age of eight. Some of you may be aware that in New Hanover, their board passed a policy where they're not allowed to suspend students under the age of eight. And so as we started looking through other codes, we saw that a lot of districts are moving towards this practice because under the age of eight, they're still unskilled, right? It's a self-regulation issue and not a disrespect issue or disorderly issue. The other thing that we propose in our practice is default for fighting without injury is five days versus 10. Some of the data that we found in school districts, as we did a study of school districts across the country, was five. Was there maximum, anything over five was pushed to a long-term suspension. One of the things that we found is, if you have a student that continues to engage in the same behavior, such as fighting, and we're not doing anything on the backside to help support that child get back, well, if the only thing they know to do is to fight to solve a situation, now we have an equity issue because that same child is getting hit with 10 days without any intervention, and that can quickly add up. A child who's out of school for 30 days probably is not going to score proficiency on their exams or retain any of the content. And so as you see, even though we are trying to get in a mindset of reducing our days from 10 automatic days, student return also includes a reentry process through in-school suspension. So during that time, the student will be coached on skills, given interventions, have restorative conferences with their teachers and/or peers before just going back into the classroom. So although the time may be shorter, the interventions will be greater before that child just returns to class. Also, our new. Also, our new pilot practices and consequences would refrain from out-of-school suspensions due to attendance and tardies. And as a former high school principal, that always hurt my feelings to send you back home because you've been missing my class, right, or missing school. So we wanted to start thinking of what other ways can we help support our students other than putting them back out of school for missing school. Also want to note that, just like our current code does, this code is also, it's guardrails for our principals, right? It is a guide for them, and they still have their own discretion using mitigating circumstances. We understand if, we've tried everything that's in our intervention toolkit and it still doesn't work, sometimes we have to go to that next step. But we really want to start a mindset shift of teaching behaviors, allowing children to repair the harm that they caused and reenter the environment in a positive way so they can get back to the business of learning. Lastly, so how are we going to do this? This month and last, we introduced this to all of our administrators, we planned support for our rollout, we understand that teachers are going to come back and say, hey, I don't think I have the skills to do what you're asking me to do, to keep kids in my class while teaching the content. So, we met with Dr. B, Ms. Swanson has set up for No-Nonsense Nertrin, that's an N and N training for everyone in the district next week. That's a practice that helps coach teachers on how to teach expectations to their students and how to use positive narration to get students to comply with classroom directives. We'll inform parents of our vision and our pilot, and of course, the hard part is introducing this to students, rolling it out to them, and showing them that, hey, it's not us getting lenient, it's us trying to teach you and support you in the school building. September through May, we'll pilot in our schools, constantly soliciting feedback from our stakeholders through our task force group. We'll implement cohort-based PD to support teachers and students. We have three cohorts. We understood we can't just train the whole district all year long, that's massive. We have created three cohorts based on discipline referrals at each school. We use that data to see who our most needy schools are, and we'll do that in three-month cycles. We'll provide coaching and PD for them based on the interventions that they want to implement in their schools. June 2023, we'll work with our task force members again to finalize this code. We'll work with you to address any potential changes in policy that we may need or we might be proposing, and then we will work also with somebody outside, because this is not my forte, to edit and brand this beautiful code that we're coming up with. And then 2023, 2024 school year, we hope for full implementation of our new Code of Character Conduct and Support to help support our young people. Thank you for your time and your support. Any questions?
Dr. Battle?
Yes, ma'am.
In your presentation, did I hear anything about what we could do with and share with our parents?
Yes, ma'am. So that is our next step. Ms. Swanson and I are working with our district team, and we're going to get with Susan on how we want to do that, if we want to. Our initial idea was to post it, do a little video, just introducing them to the work that we're doing, and then host like a Facebook Live session for people to hop on if they have any questions for our district team about what this means for their children.
I asked that question because I saw a three-year-old fighting the mother and the father kidnapping, and they were allowing that to be done. And if that type thing is going on until we get them at five, so forth, they'll think that that's okay to do, to hit them, and so forth. Well, anyway, you mentioned fighting, and I saw that last week.
Yeah.
And so, you're working on something that is needed very, very much, and I think you're on the right road.
Well, thank you. We've been working hard. That's one of the things, the equity pieces, right? If that's what they're learning in the home, and we don't teach anything different, and we just suspend, then we're not doing them any justice.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you've done a great job of making accountability, and I think you're taking a lot of the questions out that a lot of teachers have, because discipline right now is one of the most, it's more of that than anything, because we can tell when a kid comes to school and has anything there. But I like the way this is laid out, because we ask a question, this is being proactive, and if you get our teachers and get everybody to wrap around it. It's a new way of dealing with the discipline because there's a lot out there. But also, I like, I like the way you broke it down. It allows people to know what you're doing, why you're doing it, and gives them the answers to things rather than just go home and come back. I like the idea of reentry, because a lot of times, kids, when they do stuff, they're just, it's over with. But I like the idea of bringing them back in so that you're trying to be, helping them to take a different step. It's a great, it's a great plan.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, we appreciate your support.
I like your verbiage, I like your words of "consequences" over the punishment. Punishment is something I'm doing to you, but a consequence is something that you caused.
Yeah.
And I mean, I think if the accountability is, needs to be on the student, it shouldn't be something I'm inflicting on someone, something that you created for yourself, which makes you responsible for it not to be repeated. And I do like that when kids skip school, we're not sending them home and rewarding them for that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm excited to finish the editing, and we'll definitely share this and post this by next week before school starts so we can share with everyone. But I love that you said that one of, one of the strategies to use or one of the consequences says a logical consequence. What is the logical consequence for what you've done? Is it 10 days? What does 10 days do, right? So, I'm glad for your support, thank you.
Dr. Battle, I do know that some schools have restorative justice programs, are all of them going to, are we going to get around to?
So, I do do some research for that. So currently, our high schools and middle schools all have, that we know of, have a ISS facilitator. So that's the other side of this work. Since they don't return back to work until the first week of school, I think the second day after school starts, Ms. King and I, our school-based mental health coordinator, have been trying to set up restorative practices, training for them, as well as some other SEL kind of competency stuff that they can work in, so that ISS won't look like ISS anymore, right? Can't just be the room you sit in. So, we're working with them.
Because ISS has been literally like a holding tank.
Right.
But now this is not a holding tank, it's a place to learn how to walk back out.
Exactly. Ooh, I love that one, John. Yes.
Now, how about Phillips and I think Patillo made it, they've had in place a restorative justice person for at least a year.
Right.
So this is going to be expanded?
Yes, Phillips still has theirs through some of their grant funding. Patillo, I think, does have theirs and an ISS person kind of functioning in different roles.
Actually, ISS is kind of, kind of shift, all of them will shift to restorative kind of practice.
That's right.
Okay, good. Wonderful. We're looking forward to this. It's, it's great, it's going to be good. Teaching, learning, and curriculum swinging. So we're looking forward to that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Whatever we can do. Well, we're looking forward to our time to get involved.
Absolutely, okay. Careful what you ask for, I got you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, because our phones are going to be ringing, we need to know what to do.
You're right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's C. Ms. Pittman, committee reports. Policy.
Okay, thank you. Oh, shall I pause?
No.
No? Okay. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Education members, Dr. Bridges. The Policy Committee met Tuesday, August the 2nd. Members present, board committee was committee chair, Mrs. Ann Kent, Mrs. Lily Worsley, and Mr. William Ellis. So before you this evening, you have the spring updates from the North Carolina School Board Association. You also have before you this evening the table that spells out specifically what the updates for the spring are. All of the updates, as usual, are notated by the blue or red striped rules in the actual policy. The first section are policies that have substantial changes. If you look down at Policy 9400, there's a slight typo there, so where it says 520 Family and Medical League, the policy number is slightly different, and I'll give you that in just a second. But again, we looked at the policies through the lens of substantial changes, as well as those with minor changes. Policy number 3102, which addresses online instruction. You probably saw the notes for that in your table as you were reviewing your board books, but the Policy Committee did decide to pause because we needed some clarification regarding that specific policy when we met on August 2nd. And so, 3102, the notation is there in the table, but we will actually revisit that specific policy a little bit later, as well as Policy Number 7620, which is in your table. Payroll deductions, that's another policy that the Policy Committee will revisit when we convene again. So, at this time, are there any questions about the substantial changes or the minor changes as shared out by the School Board Association?
Page one of 12. That's in the revised ECPS Board Policies. That's the first section. Do we have page one of 12? Do you see that, Ms. Pittman?
So I'm on page one of 12. Which policy number are you referencing?
Okay, policy number 2420, it's a strikeout.
Yes.
Policy 2440, strike. Policy 2450, strike.
Yes, ma'am.
And what I would like to know is that the Policy Committee studied these because the information in these three policies are included in Policy 2410.
Yes, ma'am.
And the committee agreed on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what it said. Other comments, questions? I just want to thank you for your tables.
The tables are really nice.
That's great. That's how I got through it.
Yes, would you like me to proceed?
Other comments or questions, anybody? If you will, go right ahead.
Okay, yes, sir. The next section that the Policy Committee visited?
Now, one thing, do you want us to go do the approval of the, before you go to that?
However you did.
All right, I think we should.
Yes, sir.
Sure. All right, you've heard, you've seen and read the recommendation, the policy updates. Are there any other questions or comments concerning those? Then, that's your motion.
Off a motion to approve the revised ECPS Board Policies in the first section, and that, that's 26th. Second?
Motion and second for the approval of the policy revisions as presented here in this first section. For that motion and second, and a further discussion, question or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. All right, now, minor changes, 71.
Yes, sir. So the next section that the Policy Committee reviewed were two policies, or better yet, one policy and one regulation. That was of specific interest to the board, and that was the community use of facilities. And so, based on the conversation, one of the areas that the committee wanted to address at the pleasure of the board at large was for-profit groups. The policy currently stated that for-profit groups were not able to participate in the community use of facilities, but the Policy Committee, again, has recommended that we're good with the use by for-profit groups. However, would like for groups to have to identify whether they're for-profit or nonprofit, and if nonprofit, to share their nonprofit number. Now, those are the modifications that you've seen in 5030 and 5030R. I will share that Ms. Stagner has given me, provided me with additional feedback and recommends that we tweak it just a little bit so that under Section A, that we speak to for-profit and that we also speak to the specific rental fees, so that the structure of that part of the policy aligns with numbers one through four. So just a small tweak is her recommendation. Any questions regarding 5030, 5030R? And holding it until the Policy Committee can reconvene to make that small modification?
Sure. Questions or comments, anybody?
Only question I have is the, did we skip the minor changes section?
She did, right. 71, 2.
The motion was just for the first section.
Right, first section, right.
There needs to be another.
Yeah, you see where we are?
Yes.
Okay.
So, for the minor section?
Yeah, 71, 1.
So once again, those were minor changes as recommended by the School Board Association, our legal references and what have you.
Okay, okay, all right. Any questions or comments on that section? Those minor, minor recommendations from the School Board Association, beginning at 1200 going to 7541.
Right, 14.
Hearing none?
Off a motion that we approve, ECPS Policies with Minor Changes on.
Motion and second for the approval of the Policies of Minor Changes as presented, beginning at 1200 going to 7541. You've heard that motion and second, and further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. Now, we're looking at the locals.
Okay, absolutely. And so, looking at the local policy. We were able to work through and at the recommendation of the Policy Committee to open up for for-profit organizations to access community facilities, however, for the fee not to be waived. Based on the actual structure of the policy, the recommendation of Ms. Stagner is that we tweak it just a little bit more so that it flows as it needs to.
Is that where the red line, is that a tweak that you all did, or you haven't tweaked it yet?
That was the tweak that we did, but we need to go back and tweak it just a little bit more.
Retweak it.
Retweak it, yeah.
All right, okay.
Okay. So, I request then board approval to table it for now until we tweak it again, just a tad.
Right, absolutely.
Yes.
Any objections?
No.
Has to consensus. All right.
Okay. Question?
All right, and then the last section discussed by the Policy Committee, which was a fantastic meeting and conversation. Policy 5240 was a part of the spring updates, however, you'll notice in the table that we had not adapted 5240. So instead of putting that as a part of the general updates, it's being presented as a first read to the board tonight, as well as the memorial policy that we have worked on, built from scratch with the support of the School Board Association and with feedback from Ms. Stagner, who had some clarifying questions. And so, the committee went through, visited all of the questions as posed by Attorney Stagner, and addressed it in the actual policy that you have before you. So wanted to present that tonight as a first read as well.
First reading, okay.
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, do we hear motion for the approval of the 5240 for first reading?
Off a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the new policies for our first reading.
Motion and second for the approval of the new policies for first reading. You've heard- You've heard that motion and second, and further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. All righty. Okay. Thank you. Lot of work you all, the committee. Okay, actually, uh, we're moving to eight-one A. Dr. B.
So if you'll take a look in your board book, there are some fundraisers.
Okay, hold one second, till they finish.
That's all right, that's okay.
All right, go right ahead.
Uh-huh, there, in your board book, you see some fundraisers. You see one for Coca-Wimberly, Carver, and Bullitt and Stocks. So Coca-Wimberly is asking to sell some swag, um, gear, t-shirts and hoodies, um, twelve dollars. For t-shirts, twenty-five for the hoodies, and gives the dates, August twenty-ninth through September eleventh, to raise funds, and these will be used for staff and student incentives throughout the year. Um, you follow through on your board book, you also see Carver, um, as well as, um, Bullitt. They both want to do the Candyman sales. Gives you the timeline and gives you the price range for, um, the items that they've selected to have students sell. And then finally, for fundraisers, you, you see Stocks Elementary as well, Candyman. Gives the price range, gives the, um, time, twenty-first of October through November third, five to twenty-five dollars. So those are the, um, eight-point-one A fundraisers at this time.
Comments or questions on that?
I hate to ask so many questions.
It's all right, you gotta go, gotta go.
Um, Dr. Bridges.
Uh-huh.
Under the Coca-Wimberly request.
Uh-huh.
Does the, I, I'm thinking, the t-shirt's just a t-shirt, it's twelve dollars. But is that a hoodie that you could buy a shirt with the hoodie that's twenty-five?
On the sweatshirt, the hood is on the sweatshirt.
Yeah, so there's a t-shirt that will sell for twelve dollars.
Right.
And hoodies will sell for twenty-five, so.
That, that's a shirt with a hoodie on it.
Yeah, so maybe a shirt or maybe a sweatshirt type material with the, with the.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll tell you one thing, I, I was, I was looking, I bought some candy from some of these people last year. The big, huge bar that I used to get for fifty cents, it's a skinny pencil bar, now it's a few hundred dollars.
Times have changed.
That, that tells you I flogged that bit, right. Uh, eight-two A.
Okay, eight-two A, you see some field trips. Um, you see West, and there are recurring dates here for NC State, grade six through eight. Um, and in the, um, in the pack, board packet, it tells you, gives you the, uh, information around chaperones, which students are coming in the dates. If you keep further, you'll see some overnight, um, and out of state, and all of these are for Edgecombe Early College High School. Again, the dates have been listed there, the grades spans of who's going for each trip, um, and you see the details there. So I think they're repeating trips, but you taking each grade span on those trips.
All right. Any questions concerning that? All right. Okay, eight-grade A.
Okay, Mr. Hayes.
The Technology Department requests board approval to accept the Plasma Games PRC one-ninety-six grant awarded from NCDPI in the amount of twenty-seven thousand. The purpose of this grant is to provide a virtual learning platform for physical science and chemistry courses, along with STEM lessons, to engage students during instruction. Per board policy, the board must be informed of grants that are applied for and are awarded in excess of one thousand dollars.
Okay, questions? Comment? Okay, sir? You're still up.
The Technology Department requests board approval to accept the Competitive Robotics PRC two-in-one grant awarded from NCDPI in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, three hundred five dollars and fifty cents. The purpose of this grant is to provide an after-school robotics program for elementary, middle, and high school students. Students in this program will design, build, and program robots to complete challenges during robotics competitions. Four schools will be participating in the program during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. They are Coca-Wimberly Principal, West Edgecombe Middle School, and Edgecombe Early College High School.
Okay. Questions or comments? All right, you're still up. Oh, that's not true, okay, that's my fear, something. All right, and the money keeps coming.
Yes. Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bridges, and, uh, board members. Um, I'm here tonight to ask for the board's, uh, consent for, uh, two PRCs. The first one is our entitlement PRC, which is an S R three funding, and this is a career accelerator program. The entitlement funds are allocated to support public school units addressing COVID-nineteen-related needs during summer, including through in-person instruction to, uh, address the learning loss and provide enrichment activities for grades six through twelve. And our vision for this program is to build our CTE programs at the middle and high school levels by exposing students' various careers through major clarity and industry college tour. Our goal is to increase the number of certifications and credentials obtained by our students enrolled in career pathways. The funds will support staffing, programming, and supplies and materials during the summer of twenty-twenty-three. And additionally, we will utilize the funds to provide transportation to and from the camps, um, as well as transportation for students to experience experiential field trips that are aligned to the objectives of each of the camps that we will offer during twenty-twenty-three. Uh, per board policy, the board must be informed of grants that are applied for and awarded in the excess of a thousand dollars. And our recommendation is for the board to approve, uh, to accept the grant funds that have been awarded to ECPS from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for the S R three Summer Career Accelerator Programs in the amount of one-hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and seventy-three. One-hundred twenty-five thousand, seventy-three dollars.
All right. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question of the printing. Uh, in my book, uh, the first paragraph, the third sentence states that the amount of the grant is one-hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. But the writing says one-hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. So all, my question is, which is, which is correct?
No, that's the next, that's the next item.
Yes, for that.
Yes, and, um.
But you're right.
Yes, it is.
There, there is an error in that one.
There is.
This is the one before it.
Right.
This is eight-point-five A.
They are very similar, they look very alike.
Just a difference.
They were in the same grant, uh, application.
I just don't have a folder in my book, okay? Only because I didn't read right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I, I still want to know.
Right.
Uh, which is correct? Now, I think I looked on the sign sheet on the very back, and it has one-hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. So is that the actual amount?
For the second grant, yes, ma'am.
For that second grant?
Yes, ma'am, for PRC one-eighty-nine, yes, ma'am. And I apologize, that was me copying and pasting, and I missed that last word, I apologize for that.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you for clarifying that for us.
Okay.
Just want to be sure, sir.
All right. Okay, anything else? You're still up. But we've talked about it, but you want to do the second one. Go ahead and do the second one.
Um, so ECPS has applied for and, um, been awarded the entitlement grant for the PRC one-eighty-nine math enrichment programs. This is another S R three mini-grant that, um, again, it was an entitlement grant. The funds are to be allocated to support public school units in addressing COVID-nineteen-related needs during the instructional year, including through after-school and before-school programs that incorporate supplemental in-person instruction to address learning loss in math in grades four through eight. And an additional revision that they've made to this grant, that it can also be for during-the-day support, as long as a supplemental tutoring, like during our, um, enrichment and, um, our intervention time, so that we're not replacing it with our regular math instruction. Um, our vision is to partner with Kumon Learning Centers to provide opportunities for students to participate in the Kumon Method for Math Support. The mathematical, um, the method is focused on practice and mastery of key mathematical skills to build mathematical fluency and accuracy. In the Kumon methodology, each student progresses at their own pace through an individualized lesson plan established by their instructor based on placement assessments. Um, and this entire funding for this will be paid to, uh, fully fund and co, with the contract with Kumon. All the funding would go straight to Kumon for that.
And this is the one-twenty-six?
Yes, sir, this one is one-twenty-six, um, one-hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars.
Okay, questions, comments? All right, okay, thank you. Eight-seven, Mr. Hayes.
Technology requests board approval to accept the Emergency Connectivity Fund, ECF, grants, funds awarded to ECPS from the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, in the amount of nine-hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred four dollars and forty-four cents. The funds will be used to purchase student devices and Wi-Fi routers and service for school buses to support face-to-face and remote learning. This grant has been awarded in its entirety. The purpose of this grant is to purchase student devices to support face-to-face and remote learning, and to provide Wi-Fi service for school buses to support ride-and-learn and park-and-learn programs. One hundred percent of the funds will come from the ECF grant.
Okay. Questions or comments?
That's great, that's great.
It is, absolutely.
And the, and these devices are earmarked for students to use at home.
Oh, wonderful.
Yep, to support our virtual learning and our, um, homework.
That's great.
We've been talking about the Wi-Fi buses for quite a few years.
Yes, yeah.
So we have Wi-Fi buses and hotspots in families, so hopefully they can do some work at home.
All right, you've heard all of them, and we need one motion for.
Now we've secured something so we will not have another pandemic, because we are ready.
All right, you've heard all of the reports on all of the items, and we need one motion for the approval of all of the consent items here.
Motion to approve, approve, consent items, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion and second. Um. By, uh, Jewel, I wanted to say your last name.
Calhoun.
Calhoun, all right. You've heard that motion and second, and a further discussion or unreadiness? All right, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. All right, and we move to eight-B.
B, you'll see the twenty-two, twenty-three ECPS district organization chart. Um, you'll have a corrected one, I think, at your table.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Get that, mhm. And we plan to bring before you in September, um, some fillings for the vacancies that you see. We're almost there, in some spaces.
I knew it was, uh, Dr. Bridges.
I'm sorry, I, I'm talking to myself. So you see the organization chart, um, you take a peek at it, but we plan to bring the organization chart back to you in September. There are some vacancies, and we're almost to the finish line with a couple. We'll certainly talk about those during call session.
Okay, all right. Everybody get the updated one? Okay. Any questions or comments concerning that? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three ECPS district organizational chart.
Second.
It has been motioned second for the approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Edgecombe County Public School District Organizational Chart. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. All righty, eight-two B.
I'm going to present more money.
Good evening, I come, uh, before the board to request the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three Title One Part A entitlement grant. Um, in the grant summary, um, you will see that Edgecombe, uh, County Public Schools has received a planning allotment of three million, nine hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars for our Title One Part A program for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Um, this is actually an increase of one million, three hundred eight thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars from our previous, uh, year that was awarded to us. Um, additionally, we have an estimated carryover of one million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and ninety-two cents from the previous school year, which gives us a total planning allotment of, let me get to that page. I don't have a total here, it's, uh, five million, I don't have it total here, and I apologize for that. It's over five million that we will be submitting for our planning budget. Um, when we first submitted the executive summary, the, uh, initial allotment was an estimation from previous year. This week, DPI has populated our carryover, and it is that amount from the school, uh, DPI Office of Business and Finance. So, um, the total allocation here, the first chart, actually shows you our school allocation amounts. Um, our schools will get a total of two million, seven hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and ten cents. Um, and they will be submitting budgets for approval for us, um, to align with the strategies of their school improvement plans. Um, in addition, you can see our additional set-asides in the table below, and where each of that funding will go.
Okay. Questions or comments?
The, uh, excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the set-of-side funds, and that's taking, hello.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess the professional development will be for teachers who need it? Or would it be for all teachers?
Um, so the professional development, um, it would be both, and the district will, uh, use that money for district PD, for teachers and Title One eligible schools. So we can only do, uh, use those funding amounts there, those dollars, for teachers and Title One schools.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the schools themselves also, um, individual schools will set money aside for professional development if they select to provide professional development for the teachers in their school. That would be money that the, the district would have access to, to lead all teachers in Title One schools. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Questions or comments? Hearing none, do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three Title One Part A entitlement grant.
Second.
Has been motioned second for the approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Title One Part A grant. You've heard that motion and second, and a further discussion, questions or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. Thank you. Eight-three B. Up the bell.
Good evening again. I am before you at this time to request board approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Title One Part C grant, um, for migrant education program. Um, as stated in the executive summary, our, um, migrant numbers continue to decline in the county. Um, we've been working with DPI, trying to figure out how we can further identify our students. One of the reasons being that people are reluctant to identify as undocumented. Another thing, our, our farms in the area have come with new policies that they do not, not allow young kids at the camps anymore from some, um, indiscretions with older, um, migrant workers and just an inability to regulate that. So those are some of the challenges that we've run into in trying to identify, um, our migrant students. However, we still do have a migrant staff with a full-time migrant recruiter. Um, as listed here, our numbers have decreased. However, um, we will still receive, um, an entitlement allotment of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars this year, which is a decrease from fifty-seven thousand last year. We do also have still two, a little over two hundred thousand dollars in carryover. So just like, um, Ms. Pierce said, our total, um, planning allotment will be in the upwards of two-hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for this year. We'll continue to fund, um, our three migrant tutors, a full-time migrant, um, recruiter. I've also worked with Ms. Pierce, um, she, through Title One, um, and through these migrant funds, have put monies together to help also employ another ESL teacher. Currently in the district, we have about two and a half ESL teachers to, um, service our two-hundred and fifty-plus ESL students. So we're happy to be able to do that using these funds. Um, we'll continue to meet with our migrant parent advisory council. We have a meeting with them, um, next week to do a kickoff for the school year. We have a meeting with them next week to do a kickoff for the school year and hear their needs and their concerns and use these funds to service them and provide services for their students. So at this time, I ask for approval of the 2022-2023 Title I Part C grant.
I have one question before we-
Yes, ma'am.
That number 39.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the one that we're looking at for this coming school year.
Currently. So that's everybody-
Because it can expand.
Yes, it can. So we're not done yet. That number is reported in September, once we get all our kiddos in the building. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Hearing none. We have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the 2022-2023 Title I Part C migrant education grant.
Second?
Motion and second for the approval of the 2022-2023 Title I Part C migrant education grant. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion, questions or unreadiness? Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is like sign. As have it, and that motion carried. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
8-4B.
Before you this evening in your board books, you have the 2022-2023 recommended tuition rate. The tuition rate is based on the county appropriation plus fees and forfeitures divided by the projected student count. So for 2223, the tuition rate, best computed or calculated, is $1,494. I would like to request board approval of the 2022-23 tuition rate.
All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve $1,494 as the tuition rate for the 2022-23 school year.
Second motion.
You've heard the motion and second for the approval of the tuition rate for 2022-2023. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is like sign. As have it, and that motion carried. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
All right. We've skipped 8-5 now. 8-6B.
Ms. Sykes will come forward. She's going to share some information about our childcare, or ECPS childcare. You all know that we've had-
Oh, yeah.
-just a struggle with this. She's worked hard with her team to try to come up with some options for us, and so she wants to share those tonight and ask the board to take action this evening so that we can make pull with daycare procedures.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Bridges. Dr. Bridges just kind of gave a overview of what I'm here for tonight. But as you know, one of our strategic plan goals is pre-K for all. Y'all know how passionate our department and just district leadership team is about pre-K for all, and I feel like the childcare program helps us grow that program as well. As you know, over the last four years since I've been in this position, I think every year we talk about childcare. I'll click through. So this is just kind of a history. When I came on in 2019, the year prior to that in 2018, we had two childcares. We had one at Bullock and we had one at Stock's. At that time, they had two full-time employees in each of those classes, one on the infant side, one on the toddler side. Initially, the hours were seven to 3:30, and the rates were much lower then. It was 125 for the infant side and 75 for the other side. And then we were also a five-star childcare then. In 2018, they chose to close the Bullock School childcare down due to funding and sustainability, but they kept the childcare at Stock's. When they kept the childcare at Stock's, we went from two full-time employees to one part-time employee, I mean, I'm sorry, to one full-time employee and two part-time employees. That saves on the benefits that we pay out of this department. In part of the request, I am requesting that if we are able to keep the childcare, that we move back to two full-time employees so that we can support the increase in hours from seven to five. And we would like to increase those hours from seven to six. Our current new rates are 170 a week for the infants and 130 a week for the toddlers, and we continue to remain as a five-star childcare. This is just talking about our child count decrease in our childcare. Some of it could potentially be due to COVID, but I have some other considerations as well. So in 2019-20, we had 12 students. In 2020-21, we went down to seven. And then last year, we had eight students, with the majority of those being ECPS employee students. Some of the considerations for the decline in our numbers are just our operating hours. We close at five. You know, for parents to get off at five, they're not able to go pick their kids up. And other local childcares are open until six and 6:30. We are also only open for 10 months. And so, yes, that helps out our ECPS employees, but now that we have all of these summer programs going on, it really doesn't help them out anymore. And so I think that we are also not attracting our students that get vouchers, because what they would have to do is they would attend our childcare for 10 months, and then they would have to go to DSS, switch their voucher over to go to another childcare during the summer. So I think all of those things are kind of contributing to our numbers not being at the max. So currently, we are fee-for-service, and so we take parents that just pay the weekly amount, and then we also accept vouchers. So this is what our intake looks like for 10 months, and so we take in, if we are full, about $65,000. And as I've shared before, it costs no less than $77,000 to sustain just the 10-month program. And then if we were to increase to 12 months, then we would take in $78,000. But again, the cost of the $77,000 to $80,000 would increase to about $90,000 to sustain that. And so we would still be, you know, under what we're needing, $12,000 under what we're needing to support. This is also because we pay our teachers on the state salary scale, and we also have to pay those benefits. And the benefits that we pay, other childcares don't have to pay those benefits, and also our employees are getting those state raises and things like that. And so that's why it's hard to sustain that. So again, I have prepared three different options, but the option that I would recommend is that we use ESAR funding to sustain this year. If we remain at 10 months, we would need an additional $40,000 to support the program. If our childcare increases to 12 months, we would need an additional $48,000. We are requesting this funding for one school year, that would be just the 2223 school year, to allow us an additional time to come up with a sustainability plan. Through the demerger, we have formed a great partnership with some local childcares. I came up with what I thought was a crazy, out-of-the-box proposal to partner with a local childcare and actually allow those childcares to come into our buildings, but they would pay the teachers. It gives them additional classrooms that they wouldn't have at their centers, but it educates our kids in our buildings, and we still get to control the education that they are getting, and then they would, of course, move into our NC pre-K classrooms. And so I do want to say that also DPI just rolled out another grant that we could potentially apply for to help with the sustainability and may not have to use the whole $40,000 or $48,000 to sustain the rest of this year. It's a sustainability grant for childcares, and it is to help sustain the childcares as well as either give raises to the employees or provide bonuses to those employees as well. And so we got that notification last week, so we're looking into that as well. And so the partnership that we've made is with Builders Foundation Academy. It's in Edchcombe County. And so that is something that we're talking with them about and planning with them about. We think that it would be a great partnership to continue to grow our childcare as well as our NC pre-K. And so tonight, again, I'm coming to you for you to vote on one of the options for us to move forward for childcare for 2223. The first option, in my recommendation, is to use ESAR funding to sustain the childcare program. The catch to this is we would submit the plan to DPI, and we would have to wait for their approval to use those funds for childcare. There was a childcare option in one of the first ESAR grants that came out, so my fingers are crossed that they would not deny this request, but we are using this as a teacher recruitment and retention, a way to recruit and retain teachers. And so what we would like to do is discount the rate for ECPS employees at 50%, because to use ESAR funds and to use it for teacher recruitment and retention, we have to put some type of initiative with it. And so that is the first option. The second option, if DPI denies that request, the second option will be to use local funds to sustain for the remainder of the 2223 school year. And then, of course, the third option, I don't even want to read that out, but that would be to close the childcare due to sustainability.
Questions or comments?
I have a question for option one. Is your option one for 10 months or 12 months?
12.
I'm personally thinking if we tried for 12 months this year, we may actually attract non-teacher students that may fill our classrooms up more, and it may be self-sufficient. Now, I don't know. I mean, that's a gamble, but if we would go with one, I would like it to be 12 months and see if we could get community involvement, community people coming. I mean, gosh, we have so many children so close.
That's right.
I mean, and I would love to have more quality daycare after-school programs for our children.
Well, that's one thing that I proposed with the partnership, was the after-school childcare and trying to partner with that as well. You know, at Stock's, they currently have Boys and Girls Club, but at Bullock, there are no surrounding options for those kids out there. And so that is one of the proposals that we're talking about with that partnership as well. You know, I've shared, we had over 100 three-year-olds that wanted to get into our program again this year with that initiative. Typically around July, we only have about 50-some applications approved for NC pre-K. This July, we had almost 100 already. And so kids are wanting to come here. Parents want to send their kids here, and just having these options will continue to grow our program.
What about... I see the three options that you have on the screen, but what about your recommendation to the board? I mean, what are we supposed to... You did say which of these options, but you also have a recommendation. So which, what do we need to...
My recommendation would be to use ESAR funds.
Right.
The approval of ESAR funds to sustain the remainder of this year.
So that's the motion you're interested in us approving?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask for a question? Attorney. So are you also asking the board if ESAR funds are not approved, that you would have approval tonight for local funds, or that you would come back to have local funds approved at least?
Yeah. I think to say if ESAR does not work out to have local funds, because childcare needs to happen. We can't wait until September. So option one first, and then if that does not work out-
Right. If ESAR fund, actually, with ESAR fund, we pay the proof, the pay out of ESAR fund, the first amount that you put, 47, whatever it is.
And of course, that's a rough amount, depending on, you know, the parents that pay and kids that have vouchers. We get different amounts.
It's an estimate, but it's close.
So it's an estimate, but it is close.
It is, actually.
Yes, sir. So, sorry, that the maximum amount of approval of funds that you're asking the board for tonight, assuming the ESAR fund doesn't happen, the maximum amount of local funds you're asking for would be?
48.
48,000.
I guess.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? So your ask is for... Forget this. Your ask is for the $48,000 for using ESAR funds for one year.
For 12 months.
12 months.
For a 12-month program.
A 12-month program. Okay.
That's the main thing. I want to make sure we're all together.
Sure. All right.
But the motion needs to include both, right? So that we don't have to come back.
I think the motion should be, you're asking for approval of the board to spend up to $48,000 in local funds to continue the childcare for 12 months. If you apply for the ESAR funds and it is reduced and is approved, then that local funding would be reduced because you reduce the ESAR. I think that's how you're asking it to work.
So what we're asking is, we had to have board approval to even submit the grant amendment in CCIP for ESAR. And so what I'm asking is to be able to use 48,000 out of ESAR pending if DPI does not approve that, then I'm asking for the 48,000 out of local.
Okay.
Just as long as that motion contains 12 or 12 months. I made that motion, but I want 12-month program in my motion.
And 6:00 p.m.
Yes.
Really? Did you have your hand?
Yes. I was going to ask, had the application, have you already made the application to the, for the ESAR funds?
So all it would be is an amendment. And so we've already, you know, received ESAR funds, but we would just go in and add that we're requesting this additional funding, and the reason would be for retention and recruitment of teachers.
Okay. All right. That cover your motion.
Yes, sir.
All right. Second to Ann's motion.
It was a fancy motion. I can't say it again. That's exactly what I'm saying. I don't know what we vote now.
All right. We'll do it.
You state a motion. What I'm saying is that I make a motion that we apply for ESAR funds to sustain a 12-month childcare program for Edchcombe County Public School teacher recruitment and retention for the 2022-23 school year. If this is not approved, that we have made a motion to use 48,000, up to $48,000 of local funds to sustain it for one year. Second, the motion. Repeating, repeat that. He carried the motion. No, just carry your motion, ma'am.
All right. You've heard that motion and second, any further discussion, questions or unreadiness?
Thank you.
Dr. Wilson. You've heard that motion and second. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is like sign.
Yes.
And as have it, that motion carried.
Okay. So this is second approval. Johnson's approval. And then Ms. Wilson's approval after making her.
Which ones we know?
So who do I use as my second motion? I second Ann's correct that motion.
The second motion, the motion that she came back to correct.
And I had already seconded it, but just-
She had already, Dr. Johnson had already seconded the motion, and then Ms. Wilson had questions. Who do I use? Use anybody.
You're going to use Johnson? Use Johnson? That'd be good.
It's fine. I don't need-
Did you get that motion?
I'm going to get it from the recorder. You will have to.
All right. Good. Wonderful.
You will have to.
All right. Wonderful. All right. Thank you. Actually, we're at 8-7B. Mr. Williams.
Please go to 8-7B and 8-8B.
Okay.
Okay.
8-8, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Bridges, fellow board members. The Greenville Police Department is requesting board approval on waiving the facility use fees of using Princeville Elementary School on August 16th, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. to conduct police training. The Board of Education Community Use Facility Policy 5030 states, "The length of a single use of a school facility shall be limited to six hours and not exceed 9:00 p.m. and/or to waive fees unless approved by the board. There will be no custodial charge since the training will be held during normal hours." My recommendation that the board approve waiving of the facility use fees for the Greenville Police Department using Princeville Elementary School on August 16th, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. to conduct police training per the Community Use of Facility Policy 5030.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve waiving the facility use fees of the Greenville Police Department using Princeville Elementary School on August 16th, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. to conduct police training per the Use of Facilities Policy.
Second.
Motion and second, Johnson, okay. You've heard that motion and second, and further discussion, questions or unreadiness?[1777.41] Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing is like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. All right, Mr. Williams, you're still with us?
Yes.
Eight-B, eight-B.
Yes, sir. All right, the Greenville Police Department is requesting board approval of waiving the facilities use fee of using the ECPS Bridges Building Office on August sixteenth of twenty-twenty-two, from one P M. to five P M. to conduct police training. The Board of Education Community Use of Facility Policy Fifty-Thirty states that the length of a single use of a school facility shall be limited to six hours and not exceed nine P M. And/or the waiver, the waiver, the waived fees unless approved by the board. There will be no custodial charge since the training will be held during normal hours. All right, my recommendation that the board approve of waiving the facility use fees of the Greenville Police Department using the ECPS Bridges Building Office on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, from one P M. to five P M. to conduct police training per the Community Use of Facility Policy Fifty-Thirty.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, do we hear motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that will approve waiving the facility use fees of the Greenville Police Department using the ECPS Bridges Building Office on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, from one P M. to five P M. to conduct police training per the Community Use of Facility Policy Fifty-Thirty.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of the, um, waiving the facility use fee for the Greenville Police Department for the use of the bridges building August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, hours of one through five. You've heard that motion and second? Any further discussion, questions or unreadiness? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing is like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. All right, eight-nine D, Dr. D.
Eight-nine B, you see a request for the board approval of lifting the mask mandate to allow mask-wearing optional for all students, grades pre-K through thirteen, staff and visitors on school grounds, inside all C, ECPS facilities, and on school buses, school activity buses, vans, driver's education cars, and all other public school-related transportation. We had previously made mask-wearing optional inside the buildings, but we had not for transportation. So this is really addressing that. We wanted to get the board's approval to move forward.
Lift it.
To lift it.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion to approve of the lifting the mask mandate to allow mask-wearing optional for all students, grades pre-K through thirteen, staff and visitors on school grounds, inside all ECPS facilities and on school buses, school activity buses, vans, driver's ed cars, and all other public school-related transportation.
Second motion.
You've heard that motion and second? You hear, are there any further questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing is like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. You're afraid of me, we'll get there in a minute. All right, eight-ten B?
Eight-ten B, uh, request board approval of the memorandum of understanding between OIC and NC Partnership for Child Nutrition, Alliance for Healthier Generation, um, in, along with Edgecombe County Board of Education. You all recall Young Lady Kane, she shared information. I think both of the attorneys have shared. There were some tweaks to some of the, um, items that were, were in this M O U. Those changes have been made to our satisfaction. But they want to, um, they, they want to pilot a project aimed at identifying the way student, s-school nutrition can influence social determinants of health in low-income or at-risk children in Edgecombe County Public Schools. The partnership will provide a final report that outlines successful strategies and suggests next steps to impact school launch based on results from the pilot. They will, they're sharing the students that, uh, they will be looking to, to get information from. And all of this, again, has to be approved by parents. So if parents are not, um, willing to sign up and agree to the information sharing, then they won't be included. Only those that have agreed per their parents, um, will be utilized.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions or comments? Ms. Ruth? Does Ruth say, is Ms. Ruth?
Yes, she, she's on board. They, they had, they shared this pretty early on with her before I was aware. And then once, um, I learned about that, I started to give the information to them.
Okay.
But again, uh, we have not selected the location. We talked about Princeville, but we have not selected a, a location. But nothing happens unless parents say, yes, it's okay to ask the information.
Questions or comments?
So I have one about that. It's not going to be throughout the county that she'd be where, it would just be like one school.
Yeah, so, so we talked about that. I, I think that we wanted to start small. And so I'll come back and just share with you all which school we landed on. We talked about Princeville, um, just based on location, but I'll, I'll update you.
Okay.
Somebody else?
I was just thinking it would be nice if it was not only for people of color, black children, people of color, because we have a lot of low-income white families that probably could benefit from it too. But I guess it's...
It worked with them.
This says specifically, like, indigenouses.
I think that's what they got the grant for.
That's what, yeah, right, right. And I think that's why it's so...
Well, if that's the angle of the grant, I can live with that.
Yeah, a-and I think what will happen is, I think we will also learn from it. So just like, um, Dr. Battle was sharing, that they learned and realized, oh, we can do this ourselves. We can do some, we can replicate some of this ourselves once we get the information.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just look at some of our children and they go...
Ms. Lily?
I wanted to point out, there's no, um, date that, when we made the revisions to the contract, I, I left the dates blank because I didn't know when they were going to be. But I think it needs to be, um, my intention was that it was for one-year period. That's why twenty-twenty-three was the second date. And then, um, but I think you need to start at the end of the date.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so, so I would think we could do September. Uh, I mean, we certainly couldn't do August. We start school on the twenty-ninth. I think they could have it ready within the month of September. And I'd say for us to put a new date, we can do May, or we could do June. I don't know if the board has a preference.
As long as it doesn't exceed one calendar year. We do September first through August thirty-first.
Okay. September first through August thirty-first? Is that what you said?
I, I think that would be...
Okay.
That would be great, we could use it in the summer, too.
One calendar year, all right. Okay. Lily, did you have your?
No, I was just...
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the M U O, um, between OIC, North Carolina Partnership for Child Nutrition, Alliance for Healthier Generation, collectively known as partnerships, and Edgecombe County Board of Education, um, for the dates as specified by Attorney's Day.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of the, uh, M O U between OIC Incorporated, North Carolina Partnership for Children, Alliance of Healthier Generations, and, uh, Edgecombe County Public Schools, with the date specified September through one calendar year through August. You've heard that motion and second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing is like sign? Ayes have it, and that motion carried. Uh, is that young lady doing okay?
She, she has not said anything else.
Okay, all right. All righty. Okay, Ms. Lily, will you take us into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, the North Carolina Open Feeding Law Section, one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A, one, A three, and A six, to go into closed session to consider personnel matters, to consult with the attorney, to preserve attorney-client privileges information, and to prevent the disclosure of students' records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, twenty U S. C., twelve thirty-two G, and the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under G S. one fifteen C. through three nineteen through three twenty-one.
Second.
Motion and second, that for us to go into closed session. As stated by the law, you've heard that motion and second? Any further discussion or unreadiness? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing is like sign? Ayes have it, that motion carried. Let's take five. All right.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, 10.1 Personnel Management to we hear a motion to approve it as presented.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion and second for the approval of the Personnel Management as discussed in closed session. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes of July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Motion to accept those as presented.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept our closed session July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting.
You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept our closed session July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting.
Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept our closed session July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting.
You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept our closed session July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting.
You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept our closed session July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting.
You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept our closed session July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting.
You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. Closed Session Minutes. You've heard that motion and second and a further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Opposers like sign, ayes have it and that motion carried. 10.2 Closed Session Minutes. Motion to accept those as presented. You've heard that motion and second for the approval of the July 11th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting.
And so looking at just the room numbers and the number of folks that are there, Mr. Holland's there, NAIS there, Ms. Glass is there, and then we're adding some CTE folks to that space as well. I had a request today from Dr. Battle for space for the nurses. Because remember, now they're ours, not the Health Department. And then we had talked about, or we had thought, considered Hope students. We decided to keep them where they are. But I don't want to overextend, so I will meet with Ms. Binbo. We may have to find a different location, not sure. But one, the nurses, I think they need to take precedence over the spaces. I've asked her to check and see if it's possible for them to be at a school. That might be a better location, but I will get with Ms. Binbo. I didn't want to, I just wanted you all to be aware. She doesn't work for ECPS, she works for DPI. And I just want to give a little bit more background information of the need for space and what that would look like for us and what kind of obligation that might put us under. Yep, and one other piece of correspondence. I don't know if you all have seen your Welcome to Tarboro Magazine for August. We have one of our graduates, Dr. Johnson's son is listed here. It talks about his history in Edgecombe, but also the wonderful things he's done throughout his career. So if you've not picked it up, grab your copy to read about one of our former students. Congratulations to him and to Dr. Johnson.
All right, any other?
That's it for me.
All right. Items brought by the board members, superintendent for consideration. Dr. B., doing it now, and we talked about when Mr. Williams was talking about pulling this carpet and things up out here. Is there a possibility of looking at, rather than putting carpet back, may look at some monobium or some tile or something?
Yeah, and I don't know if he mentioned that or not. I can check with him, but I think he mentioned that to me, not replacing it with carpet. Because carpet gets so dirty. You know, this is a busy place, so it might be better to not use carpet. Yeah, but I will ask him about that, certainly will.
Ruth's place over there, somebody said that there was some, no air, or it was hot over there somewhere for Ruth there.
Ruth McDowell? So she's in this building? She's in this building?
She's okay, I mean, that place is okay?
She hasn't said that to me, but... I can check, but she hasn't mentioned that to me, but I'll ask her about it.
Check and see if you will.
Okay.
All right, and make sure that they're okay.
I know the test won't finalize yet, but can we maybe September receive the...
Absolutely, yeah. Sure, thank you for saying that. We should have the official results like DPI at the end of this month. So I'm expecting it any day. And again, that will tell principals where they fall on that list. So I think that we will use that information to also answer your other question earlier today. When you said, how will it affect us? We'll know officially from them, net, not net exceeded. They'll give us the data. They say October, and somebody told me they think it will be sooner. And I think it may be sooner because people are not happy.
People are asking about it.
You know, yeah. We were shocked that that was what they decided to do. I had heard whispers, but I thought they won't, they're not going to make that decision. But to do that in one year, that's just...
They're doing the same for retirees. They're shooting their sales in the foot. All we're doing with not doing anything with retirees is making the charge schools and the private schools a lot stronger.
That's exactly right. So as soon as I get it from officially from DPI, we'll share, or I'll ask Mr. Holland to do a session for us.
Okay.
Okay.
You needed to ask about personnel.
Oh, could, by any chance, do you have some information on the numbers we have?
Uh huh, I do. And I would like to preface when I share with you...
If you'll kind of come up here, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Your mask down.
Yes, sir.
Muzzle down.
I am, yes. And what I was sharing is I wanted to share that the conversation is still one across the state. There is some conversation among the School Superintendent's Association now. Where is it, Mr. or Dr. Hoag?
Mr. Hoag.
Mr. Hoag is collecting information actually from all LEAs in North Carolina because of the teacher shortage, which, you know, continues. But then now even looking at classified staff, because the private sector is raising the hourly rate to, you know, like $18 an hour, whereas this school year, the minimum is 15. And so...
It was stretched, did you get it later?
You know, and so the shortage is real for both certified and classified. But with that being said, he did send out like a Google form to all LEAs wanting that information because they're going to present aggregate data. And so for K5, there are 11, and this is just core. This is not, this is like just core. K5, 11, 6, 8, 7, 9, 12, 12. So about 30 core vacancies, one support staff vacancy, which would be the counseling position at Southwest Edgecombe. Because Ms., ooh, thank you. We have a counselor who has transitioned, and so this, that's why. A counselor who has transitioned, and so we have one support staff vacancy. This is a conservative estimate, classified about 31, and then EC about 7. And these numbers are changing literally every day because those forms are coming in. As soon as principals try to submit a request to field, we're subject to get three resignations for one request to field. But something that, in submitting this data, that was eye-opening for me, one of the questions that was asked was how many of our teachers are under the residency license? Residency is the alternative pathway. And so, and today during the first day of new teacher orientation, but 46 and counting under residency. That means the number of teachers who are coming in who did not go through a traditional educator preparation program. So what does that mean for us? It means that you have people who are doing the work, walking in the door, who don't have that foundation yet. And so that learning curve is especially steep. Even in the room today, we had about 35 or so. The question was asked, like, how many of you are coming in under what we call an alternative pathway? And to see the hands that went up in the room. So finding teachers, like, I'm amazed with that as far as the struggle because most of who we're getting in now are people who did not go to school to become a teacher. There are people who saw it's their second career, or people who have gotten their four-year degree and may not have found anything in their field. And so principals are scooping them up because what they know is as long as you got that four-year degree, you know, and this is, this is the challenge when you talk about turnover. As long as you have that four-year degree, a principal knows, I can get you a permit from the state. That's good for one year. In order for you to be queued up to come back for the next year, you know, the requirements start to set in. But for one year, as long as you have your four-year, oh, we can get you a permit pretty much. But the conversation or the thing that we're mindful of is when you bring somebody in under that permit, if they're far from having the hours that are required, then what does that mean for me as a principal? Year two or year three? Because if you don't meet those benchmarks, my door almost becomes revolved. And so it's scary, it's scary.
That's what I'm saying, they're making it, the stakes helping these people get into the classroom. Again, we got retirees out there that we need to keep in classrooms. Whatever's, they're closing their eyes to, maybe that's what they want to do.
And that's why we're having a discipline problem because they have not received the proper training.
And to your point, Dr. Wilson, you're right. And that's today, our focus for day one has been, and we had amazing teacher leaders who did a session today on student engagement strategies. And then tomorrow, our curriculum and instruction team will do the whole day with everything about the content and the strategies. And then Wednesday will be the classroom management piece. And I don't want to get wordy because I know the night, you know, is extended, but the classroom management piece, because we figure if we can get you something on how to engage students so that they're not bored or shut you off, that's a plus. And then if we can get you something about how to have procedures in place so kids don't act out because they don't know, what do I do if I need to go to the restroom or get a pencil or this and that? So, yeah, and one last thing, and I promise to zip it. This year, we're offering and have not offered it in a while, a community tour for our beginning teachers. So three days of face-to-face, and then Thursday, starting at 9:00 in the morning, based on their feeder pattern, they're going to load up on buses. So everyone in, you know, Tarboro City, they will have their tour. And Mr. Jenkins is going to facilitate the conversation. So we have like a, I don't know if you want a moderator, narrator, or whatever, so that as the bus goes through the community, someone who knows that community will talk to the teachers. The West Side, I want to say Yamicah Bullock, the Employee of the Month tonight, because she spent years at West Edgecombe Middle School, will facilitate that conversation. And I think we have like some partners too, in some instances. So it's not a singleton who's having the conversation, but we're trying to link people up. But we're proud about, proud about being able to offer that community tour.
Yes. I do have one more question. Are we ever at the point that it's so far between board meetings that we may lose people because another board meets more frequently? And if so, would that be a consideration that we might need to meet again before September? I mean, I mean, I would be more than happy to come in, I mean, and do close session, you know, just so we could, you know, if you're at this part of the year and it's between this system and that one, and they go first and we lose them, I'd be more than happy to come in and vote.
So, and it's interesting that you say that because last week, what we did this year that's a little bit different is because the books have to be prepared, like, one of the most tedious parts, two parts are tedious for us when it comes to processing. One would be the licensure piece, reviewing the transcripts, making sure people are in queue for that. And then the second part is the background check, you know, getting that back once we submit the information. So, long story short, during the summer months, right before school starts, yes.
Well, I'd be more than happy to be in one body.
Yeah, just let us know, we can pull it together. We can get four people. Thank you for what you all are doing in the new beginning teacher orientation. And of course, I know that that's going to continue. Because actually, you got two weeks to put it in place. If you don't do it then, you ain't going to get it done. That needs to happen, that's very important. If you don't do it in two weeks, it's, you lost it. You might as well go home. Now, all of our administrators on staff, good?
The only one is we're waiting for Roderick Tillery from Nash. I think he's the only one not in place. And I was just going to add, as Ms. Pittman has shared, some of the woes of the hiring. What I will say is, we talked about the salaries for our directors. We have, we see the principal pay and what might happen there. You know, I feel, and I think you all are supportive. If we would not do anything with our principals, we would be in trouble, right? And we still have some areas of concern because as I shared with you, going from principal to director is not financially rewarding. There's a problem there. And then what I'm seeing, I think you talked about the private is doing $18. And we're going to continue to see that. Our salaries are not keeping up. So, you know, I've had many conversations with folks about their salary, where they are, requesting a raise. That's going to keep happening, and some places are just outpacing us. And so when we look at the personnel report, I expect to continue to see folks leave when someone is going to pay significantly more. And I really, I mean, it's sometimes having a great place to work is enough, and sometimes it's simply not. When we have our superintendent meetings right now, 72 superintendents in North Carolina have zero to five years of experience. That's scary.
They're all mere babes.
72, zero to five years.
Mere babes.
Okay? So, so that's kind of, that's what we're dealing with.
And you know that they...
Yeah.
That's right. And you know that days of people working because of what they love, when it comes to teaching, is gone. They're running out of the money. They're really running out.
If we need to do anything, and that's another thing, come bring us back together. If we need to do anything, if we're going to lose a director or somebody because we didn't kick in a few dollars, bring us back together.
Absolutely.
And you can, we can help with that. We don't need to lose good people.
Absolutely.
We do not.
Agreed.
All right, thank you for what you do, both of you. Absolutely, I see you all working every day hard, and thank you.